The Young County Commissioners Court to order. Let the record show that it is nine thirty A.M. All five members of the court are present. We're currently streaming live on YouTube. And if you're watching and you'd like to make a comment, you may call in on nine four oh two two one two one two seven. If you're able, please stand for an invocation and pledge. Commissioner Wiley has the honorable.
I pray. Hello, gentlemen, for today, just want to say thank you, Father. Say thank you for today, mercy to your grace. Oh, we say thank you, Father, for the blessing that you give us this day, Father. Father yesterday, Father, you give us our meaning, Father, in the sense of your wisdom and your guidance and direction, all matters at your hands, Father. Father, we listen to begin our budget, Father. You give us insight and information when we make good decisions. Father, the Lord is today, God and director today, Lord of the meeting that passed over the last few weeks. I pray, Father, that you just be looking and walking through this time to the line. Father, give them peace that only you can give. And Father, the staff today, to be with those that are first responders, Father, to those that are in hardship, this attitude, just lift them up to you, this attitude, just protect them during this time. Father, we just ask you, yes, we love you, praise you, be precious to you, Father. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the liberty of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, thanks, Jimmy. Appreciate that. We'll move to public comments. I want to remind everyone, the food truck festival is this weekend. As a result, we're going to, for the setup of it, the courthouse is going to close on Friday, so we can get all the cars off, so that they can start bringing their food trucks in and start setting up the booths. Think four H is going to paint the William P. Johnson Cemetery Friday?
They're supposed to, the fifth.
I think the fifth is Friday, so they're going to make that look really nice. I think that's a great four H project.
We've already got, I probably went in and got to paint a little bit Irish, because I bought paint that they could go over once with, instead of having to do primer and paint. Since it's a bunch of kids, I figured it would be nice.
Perfect, and I know, I know the group purchasing the supplies and everything for them, but I, we do have a budget for the cemetery, so when you come in, we'll, we'll make sure it comes out of the cemetery budget.
Yes.
Those are the only announcements I have.
We got two beaches this weekend, they're ready to go. Do you want to review these? They're well way, way on their way in the elevator. The guy was, yeah, fire protection, he figured that we have some stuff to get. So we're looking, hopefully everything goes accordingly with the two beaches in the rain. So.
That's great. It looks like speed lunkers, but they're caged half, or they're binding half, or something.
Then we get lost guys down, and then one of the guys, the mechanics today, back through the weekend, so he's been waiting on for a few days.
And we wound up at the precinct in the morning, the Starlink. Oh, we did not go with that. We, we voted to go with whatever God worship ability to do that. We, oh, somebody, thank you for pointing it out that we could get digital plastic fiber out there, and we're doing, it will save a hundred bucks a month.
I heard it would be, it'd take about a week, and all this kind of tech. Yeah, now fibers are that's on, so I'm glad that's, that was available. So thank you, Tommy, for the suggestion, or the direction.
He was right next door.
What, any other public comments?
We don't think it's trash, it's a little, pretty little bit of people.
Well, if there are no more public comments, we'll move, and if, with your permission, can we skip to item number seven, which is a Zoom conference call with CapEx resources to discuss potential consulting with Young County on the Titus Tapadere Solar Farm project? On Zoom, I have Mr. Jeff Snowden. He's Zooming in from East Texas. He is currently working with Jack Keenan on their solar farm abatement with two bumpers. And he's previously worked with Alamo County on a solar farm deal, he courts other people, but those are the two judges that I've been able to connect on. So Jeff, can you interest, I mean, you and I have had, we've talked quite a bit, but do you have a chance, could you introduce yourself to the commissioners and then kind of tell us about what, what you could do for us?
I can do it, you know, are we okay?
I can.
Mr. Brady. James Snowden with CapEx Resources, and I specialize in assisting local tax entities with the abatement negotiations, drafting documents, working through getting the best rate from the county. Done several around the state. I think this would be number seventy-seven of the three twelve abatement agreements I've done. I've looked at the application, I'll just jump right into some details, unless I have to tell you like any more background information on me.
Well, I think you, you know, you and I went over your background pretty extensively, but if you could give the commissioners, I have not shared much of our conversation yet.
Okay, well, I've been doing, I started my practice in two thousand and seven. Prior to that, I worked for Commingoli Thomas dot com. And started doing this type of work in twenty seventeen, district for Tom Green County. And, you know, like I said, you count the data centers, I've done over fifty billion dollars in taxable value on these. Also currently asserted on the board of directors as chairman of the Delta County Police District where I live here. So that's a quick background. Did look at that application, and I've got some thoughts on, just observations on what, what they submitted, and I looked at your tax rates and also your certified values. I'm showing you got a billion seven that were third of item twenty-four, or five twenty-five, or is that still underway?
No, it's still underway. That's going to be, that's going to be at least a month or so out. I'm anticipating a five percent increase.
Fantastic. Of a billion seven, reach three hundred and so I think that was industrial. And that's how, which is what this project would be. They stated in the application that this project is worth two hundred and sixty-four point six billion dollars. I looked at my databases, I'm showing this project is actually worth odd of ten billion dollars. So it's not uncommon for that, for the developers to understate values in our applications. But the first thing we would do would be to ask them, look at the databases, make sure they didn't miss anything. But if they asked, we would think it true that five hundred and ten billion dollars would roughly add thirty percent to your, that tax will value based on twenty-four point seven billion dollars certified values. So it's a pretty significant addition, it would definitely drive your tax rate down. And there's ways in the three twelve agreement that I would draft, we could work to freeze today's current tax rates. If over that ten year period, irrespective of the impact of this new value, we would lock that in. And in doing so, not allow the developer to tell their batteries to write that tax rate down. So that would be my approach, is, yeah, make sure that they understand what the real taxable value is, will apply some depreciation to do that based on richer habits, depreciation schedules, I believe that's your industrial consultant, really your police district. So I have the depreciation schedules in my mind. And then from there, it's really, it boils down to the pilot. How much can we recover this in the payment, in lieu of taxes? Which, an advantage of that payment is it spreads out, you're around the over the ten year period, so you don't have a big taxable value revenue impact in year one, let's say say it's twenty twenty-eight, or twenty twenty-nine rather. You know, I have a big hit then, which would drive your tax rate down, and progressive depreciation, which would result in you having to come back upping your tax rate, we want to split that out. And of course, keep as much money as we can in Young County. In the form of this pilot, also signing sales taxes for the batteries to extend. Judge W. R. E. have a?
Yeah, half a cent.
Yes, sir.
That's correct, right, Jimmy? Yeah, we have a half a cent county sales tax, which I think is the max we can do, right? Yeah. So one of, one, one of the questions that you and I talked about, or one of my questions that we talked about, is, you know, the value of a pilot. This, you know, it started off to where the pilot was maybe thirty percent, so seventy percent of the taxes were being abated. Then it's kind of moved to fifty fifty, but tell the commissioners what you told me, you told me that you feel like that market's strengthened even more in favor of Young.
Absolutely, Judge, yes, sir. I believe that in Palo Alto County, we closed at thirty-five percent. Jack County, our first position's twenty percent. We're still negotiating with them. But no, sir, I think you'll make a much better trade, especially given your history of lowering your tax rate. I'm looking here, in twenty seventeen, you lowered your tax rate on average three percent per annum. So we can demonstrate to the developer that they're getting good value to the tax rate, which will come down more. And no, sir, I don't, I think you've got a strong opportunity to lock in anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five percent of the rate, and keep anywhere on sixty-five to seventy-five percent of the revenue on your full levy. And that's importantly, that would hold, be holding the current tax rate stable. And that's important. If, I'll just give you a quick example, I'm going to share with you just on the, just on the solar component. I'm not going to put the batteries in right now, just to make a simple calculation. There you go. If you continue to drop your tax rate by two point nine percent per annum over this ten year abatement period, this is the revenue from the solar under a full levy, plus minus seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So, and that number is actually greater, now it's not about eighty percent, but again, on top of that, for battery companies. So we certainly want to give you all those numbers so you make an informed decision, but that would be the approach.
Gentlemen, do you all have any questions?
Did he say that there is a sales tax on the later abatement?
Well, so what his agreement, and I've, I've read several of those agreements now, what he puts in his agreement is that he requires that they cite these items, and they, they basically indicate that they're going to pay the sales tax in the, in the place they're going to be delivered. So the batteries, when they showed up, show up, I'm speaking here, when they show up, they would actually pay Young County sales tax, but they'd be very.
We're talking about the money right there.
Theoretically, it could be an advantage to both parties, because if they're getting it into city, they would have to pay a city sales tax.
And they had to pay for it.
Yeah, whereas here, they would only have to pay the county's, so it could be a win-win, where we, we get the sales tax, and they might, they might save a little money themselves.
Okay, right.
Yes, sir, and the battery component would not be, if I'm showing, and the batteries, if it's a two hour storage project, it'd be worth about a hundred and eighty billion dollar taxable value. And if that's the case, let's say that we net off of a hundred and eighty million. Well, let's just do this. That's nine hundred thousand taxable value for the full load of the project. Now they'll come back and say, and it'll be justified when they say that not all the sales tax eligible, certainly the batteries weren't being, and the batteries make seventy-five percent of that taxable value. We're still talking about. Let's see if here. A very good amount. Those have, there you go. About six hundred point five billion dollars, six hundred point five thousand dollars, rather, through the benefit of Young County, in the form of your half penny sales tax. Generally, if that were the case, you never, I'd say it'd be a win-win for the developer to stand, take a forego, a ten percent sale tax, maybe some other local taxing unit in favor of half a penny, Young County.
That's over the ten years? Well, it's going to be when they, it would only be when they bring the stuff in, so it'd be, it'd be a one-time deal unless they had to replace something.
We wouldn't really evade, evade the batteries themselves, just be the solar farm parts.
Well, you would, you abate the, the battery components if you abate the panels. You don't abate the real property, is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, sir, it is. And just to modify slightly what you said, the sales tax will then would be triggered when they place the batteries in service in Young County?
Oh, in service, not when they put them on the ground, it's when they turn them on.
Yes, sir, when, when they place them in service, it's what will trigger.
Yeah, that'd be at the end. So. All right, any other questions? Tommy, do you have a question?
Yes, maybe he covered this, but I didn't hear anybody asking. Sure. Those were, those, Mr. Strum? I'm probably not, I have a question here. You, you mentioned the.
I, I'll repeat the question for you, Jeff.
Let me get closer.
Can you hear him now?
Can you hear me okay?
Better than just standing, yes, sir.
Okay, I'll, you mentioned, third item there, that they estimated the value of the project to be, and you said for like five hundred and ten million, you're, you're, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, when you take into consideration that number, that you already, you push it out, for the ten years, tax valuation, it'd be in value? I didn't say that exactly.
I think, I think he's, that's the starting value, not the depreciated value.
So, so first ten years of that, they would appreciate that five hundred and ten million for taxable, for taxation pay. And that's, that's really correct, that's, that's, it's not equipment, it's not a fifty percent reduction right there, that's, that's a law. It's not, it's a law.
I think they depreciate seventy-five percent over ten years, is what I think they're allowed to do.
By statute, they must have, like, by statute, they must have been on twenty percent remaining on the taxable year. So they're going to aggressively drill down and remove eighty percent of that value.
Yeah, whatever, I've seen, okay, there's, there's relatively half the fraction right there, about one. Okay. I don't, I don't give what you're saying. I understand, it's, it's.
Five times five is twenty-five. Is that simple?
I don't, I don't hear what you're saying.
Okay.
If you take a five hundred, if you take a five hundred and ten million number, I said, and then if the taxable value, I really could have had it. And then like your, your taxes, or, but you're getting relatively, your tax pay percentage better. So. Oh, yeah. And then you could have made that fifty percent, another fifty percent, that's, that's the point. It's always been the point we've been trying to discuss with you guys. If that's not, if these guys got a pinch you, that would be it. Some of the counties are quite aggressive for it. Okay. Have you, did you make that point? Do you understand me? Now, when you're, as much as you guys, I hope you understand what I'm saying. And the math is there, unless there's something I'm not aware of.
Yeah, well, Jeff's saying.
It's third and sixth grade algebra, guys.
Okay, thank you, Tommy.
Yes, sir.
All right, does anyone else have a question? Or Jeff, do you have a response?
Yes, sir, and the gentleman is not wrong. They will aggressively appreciate, what is it, what is an abatement agreement, provide the counties, act stop to those efforts of several things, but the first is, we, in the absence of the three twelve agreement, it's not uncommon for the developers to submit a rendition or render value, which is artificially low, they've already started that with the application. So number one, in the three twelve agreement, we're going to start the taxable value in the right place, that'll benefit you, and also benefit the other tax entities that are subject this agreement, because that will be formally reported to the president. So five hundred and ten billion is what we are starting point, lest they give me electric information while they're getting this done.
Let me ask you this, let me ask you this, Jeff, so you, you're saying they're, they want to start at two sixty-four, you think the starting point should be five ten. What would typically an appraisal district come in and value this at?
They, they typically rely on the outburst rendition of the value.
So you're saying they would be closer to the two sixty-four, they would be appraisal district?
Yes, sir, I believe that to be the case. The, the second way an abatement agreement would help you is during the, as the, who was it, the commissioner, was he? One of your commissioners?
No, that was someone from the public.
Okay, so as the gentleman was stating, there is a, a line of depreciation that they must follow over the ten years. And what happened is during the ten year period, due to the level of investment they're planning to make, they will deploy consultants, attorneys to challenge your professional review board at every step of that ten year schedule. And doing so will lower the values, lower the unaccounted value they'll pay. When we do a pilot agreement, that opportunity is removed. They will not benefit, they will benefit from that with the other tax entities, but they will not with accounts, we have fixed year revenue stream, and they can deploy whatever, whatever other resource they, they want to challenge values, which they will do, but it will not impact your revenue. And I find that, when I look at my work going back several years, it's not uncommon that for, uncommon for that to reflect additional revenue to the county and hundreds of thousands of dollars just by eleven eight, that they, that they make.
All right, let me ask you this, because you're making an argument that you can actually generate more money from the county in an abatement, if you would, outside of the abatement, is that correct? Is that the argument you're making?
Yes, sir.
So if that is the case, why are these companies asking for abatements if, if the counties have wised up and they figured a way to, to, to make more money through the abatement process?
Couple of things, number one, they, if they're running the models, and they assume your tax rate is going to escalate, so they continue to drop over the ten years, then I would work in the favor of you fixing the tax rate. Number two, the, the majority of these developers are developers, and they put the deal together, lease the land or buy the land, and lock in, they put, then they flip it to another entity that actually builds and operates there. And they like to have as much of an application executed in the aisle when they flip these, and the abatement agreement demonstrates communities support, so it's very valuable for these developments.
Because we, we, you don't know what's going to happen, but, and I would anticipate we're going to, we are going to drop our tax rate.
I guess.
But what I understand, what he was saying was, is if we don't have an abatement agreement, and their taxable, you're going to come in there and argue with that, and keep it down other than what we would if we had it.
Didn't it? Because you negotiate it one time.
They can do it, they can do it every year, every county, every year.
This would take them away.
Take that away. They'd probably increase our.
They still do it, they'll pay you, and they make you go to mediation. You go to some of the.
Not if you have a pilot payment, not if you have a pilot payment, they're watching for that.
If, if the gentleman, if you can support, for the folks that are, asking why would you consider abatement, are they punished if we're allowed to incorporate which, without an abatement agreement, you could not? For example, we mentioned the sales tax, citing, there's no reason for the developer to do that, they would not do that if they had an abatement. The powers such as putting up a vegetated screen, I wouldn't be, from any existing commercial residential business, or resident or partial business, giving us reports on the general safety data sheets, giving our, our firefighters training, and instructing them on how to handle it, if there are any issues there, providing all weather roads and that. However, it didn't do protect your county roads, I have a series of about fifteen to twenty, sometimes thirty, comments that I incorporated in these agreements, that they must perform under, under which they would perform under if you did have an abatement agreement.
Ask you what number each they can, for a mega one.
What number would you, would you estimate for a mega one? On a pilot payment? Is that something you can do off the cuff? Or is that?
A little bit more research. Well, let's see here, I'm estimating, I haven't looked at any relevant base, actually we're going to collaborate for it. They're estimating, their values at about a million two fifty per meg, and that's actually about.
Say that again, they're estimating what?
One million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxable value per installed megawatt is what our starting point would be, the negotiation. And if we were successful in getting a thirty-five percent rate.
We mentioned twenty to twenty-five.
I thought we were saying you started at twenty.
Probably about fifteen million per meg.
Say it again?
That would result if we got a thirty percent pilot done, where you would be like seventy, thirty-five rather, you would be receiving pilot tickets that were derived on a taxable value of eight hundred and fifteen million dollars per installed megawatt.
Eight fifteen?
Yes, sir.
And that's. Would it be similar, I guess you do batteries, maybe one hour, is that, is that the legal?
Absolutely right, yes, sir.
Okay. And so that would be a, a separate calculation for what that would be, right?
Yes, sir. Avails reporting two hour battery storage right now, about nine hundred and twelve million per installed megawatt hour.
All right, Jeff, while everyone's thinking of more questions, explain to them kind of your philosophy on how you would communicate with the commissioners and, and your travel policy, you know, just so that they understand.
Well, as I was explaining to you last week, I've limited my travel over the last few years. If I have clients, for example, I'll be traveling all county next week, I'm a Texas on a data center deal. If I'm identifying, need to travel, it's an absolute necessity, I do that for the most part, I'm most effective covering our clients, I would take job remotely. So I hope I would be open to Zoom meetings, but if we got behind the meeting either, I would be, I just don't. I would say ninety-five percent of our client best, right, I do Zoom meetings, Teams, calls, et cetera.
But you would be open, but you would be open coming to the public here in your.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Any other questions, guys?
Do you ever figure any initial funding in your abatements back to fire departments or other things like that?
Yes, sir, definitely, we all structure those payments. We had a deal in Raines County, it was, County seats everywhere. We had them, initially they made a payment, first responders, I forget the amount, they came back for an amendment, and we said, well, if we wanted amendment, we got, we got bid for eighty-five thousand dollars for the two-way radio, and we'd like to rial to have those funds payable to the county on the, for the date of execution, we'd see agree to. So, yes, sir, I'm familiar with the asking them for those one-time payments, as, as consideration that we can certainly build those in to the agreement, that to, they'll be running the same models that I am, so to the extent that we ask them for those funds, don't want a line of pilot payment, which will increase your bank percentage, so I like to try and get as much money for the county as I can within the confines of annual pilot payment. But it's, the, it's, 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 it's pretty close to the.
Well, don't. I don't know where that is. What city is that?
They did, as a challenge, they work, yes, sir, I'm certainly able to do those, and deal those with price, cooperate those, and agree.
Any other questions? Could I ask one more question? You may.
Like, this phone down here. So I'm going to say compared to, to your study, you're making the argument, Young County can save more money with the tax benefits that you're bringing up, if I else create a big thing? Are you making the argument?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's accurate. Assuming your tax rate continues to drop about around three percent a year, which I suspect it will, especially when you add thirty percent of, increase your total taxable value by thirty percent in twenty-twenty-eight with the implementation of this project.
That's right.
It'll struggle and then you'll end up generating more revenue under the abatement agreement and leaving the taxable value to the webs of artificial values and aggressive challenging of the annual valuations with your A R P.
Any other questions?
Have the subsidies changed on these solar farms since the new election has took place by a lot? Or is it just still remaining about the same?
Right now, as the Senate, the outside of the big beautiful bill has had a haze out of that. What I understand is that to push it back on, I can share with you that when Trump was elected the first time, he inherited, his project carried thirty percent of the best tax credit. Which means the day that they flipped the switch and pushed the first bill on the hour on the grid, they're entitled to take the value of this user five hundred million dollars. They're able to go and receive one hundred fifty million dollars in a tax credit. Was, of course, should have taxed better if organizations with big tax liabilities like banks and insurance companies, they'll pay ninety to ninety-five cents on the dollar to get that tax credit. So that's the center. When Trump was elected the first time, he phased it from thirty percent year one to twenty-six percent year two to twenty-four percent. It also goes down to twenty-two percent. Then twenty-twenty came along. It was immediately restored to thirty percent. I don't know how the Senate and the House, I think he tried to predict what they all come up with, but there is a lot of talk about phasing these out. So far enough it is, is, is solidified.
Well, they're subsidized, probably heavy to start with.
Okay.
I missed that. What was that?
He made a comment that they're subsidized very heavily from the get-go from the federal government. I would like to ask one more question.
Thirty percent, yes, sir. Which means they've got a service debt on seventy percent of the spend. So three hundred and fifty million, in case this project will need to generate free cash flow to service the debt on three hundred and fifty million dollars. So it will need to be viable. If you do any research on bankruptcies of solar farms and battery storage, Texas I have found, so they tend to perform.
Mr. Governor, stop now. One more question. Are you thinking of, something that we will get more taxable dollars in County coffers? With the tax might, we can go back. I'm too deep in the region to say that we're going to have that. Just asking one question. Yes, or no?
I'll give you a guess, subject to my assumptions, if your tax rate continues to drop on three percent for over the ten years. And that they would aggressively challenge values over the ten-year period. If you combine those two impacts, yes, I believe that the pilot revenue rate would exceed the annual revenue.
What would that balance revenue be?
Well, we haven't negotiated that yet, so.
I was talking about one of the measures. I think that's three hundred thousand dollars a year or ten years. I bet. About you. That's what somebody else told me. Well, that's what you take the decaying of it. What'd you tell me?
No, it's not what somebody else.
That's what you said that night. Anyway, regardless of that, we need to go back to Congress before we, before we move. It might be. President, President, President. Just automate the evaluation, get the detail, not what's available, what's right.
All right, any other questions, guys? How are the guys? Scott? All right. Basically, good?
Good for them.
All right, Jeff, I think that's all our questions today. So we will disconnect and, um, we'll talk about you behind your back. You're good again.
I appreciate that. We'll go to work with the county.
All right, thank you, thank you. Bye.
There's stuff that you know a lot about.
But Tommy, that's, that's.
That's true.
Completely.
We both have the same trouble, please.
Okay.
I'm not trying to speak for experience.
Our.
Can y'all honestly say that you're going to reduce the tax rate three and a half percent for ten years? With, with cost of services and stuff just going to go up?
We are trying to. And we've been, since I've been here, we've been able to reduce our tax rate pretty. You know, every year we've been reducing it.
Oh, we want to try to do that.
Well, I mean, I'll allow it, but I don't say.
And we've got with construction, there's, there's, now there's a couple of other solar farm projects in the county that are poking around. So I mean, there's, there's the, there's the thought process that we're going to get some increase in investment in the county, which would allow us to keep decreasing the tax rate.
Here's the biggest problem.
My goal is to decrease the tax rate every year.
Just don't make that deal.
Here's the biggest problem we have with decreasing the ta, the taxes is we can decrease them, but then whenever the state comes in and raises property values, that's where we've lost the battle each year. And we have no control with that.
Yeah, well, but these, 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 they've got lawyers attached. They, you've talked to these other candidates. Who, who these, they said, well, they said, what, what they've agreed in the last two months? I know Trapwood County got that situation. They're going with it every year. They want, and they like to go to mediation. They mitigate taxes, what they've agreed to pay. Guys, you can't trust them because that's what they're about is, is taking all the money they can right out of middle America. They seek some trust, some, Mr. Capital, bring the pocket. Now, these kind of decisions, these kind of decisions, guys, it sucked all the economy out of, out of, out of Europe. And it's going to suck it up. It's certainly constantly sucked it out of middle America.
Mr. Don, Mr. Don, what we're trying to do is, is get these members together so we know. And that's what we're trying to do here.
I know, but there's a big pushback as anybody speaks up about the tax margins. Sell your cows, but don't pay the grass lease guys. So, sell, sell them your cows, but don't pay their grass lease farm. That's a good, that's a non-alleged. I figured you figured that.
Okay. Since we finished the Zoom call, number eight goes with, goes with number seven. So we're discussing considering Young County's options for council recording abatements. In the past, past, we said, we, we thought we were going to go with Allison Bass. And what I reported is when I called and told him that we said we were going to use them for council, he, he told me a couple of things. He goes, well, I'm starting the retirement process. I'm training as my replacement and I'm going on three-week European vacation.
I don't think we have.
I've never, I've never heard from him since. Snowden was referred to me by Jack County and Palo Alto County. And first time I talked to him, I really liked him. Second time I talked to him, didn't like him as much. I liked him a lot better this time than I did the last. I keep, I keep changing my opinion on him. Um, he's not a lawyer. That's the one thing about him is he's not a lawyer. He's a, an MBA. He's a finance guy. He's a numbers guy. Um, a negotiating, negotiator type guy. There's a, there's two other firms, ones in Lubbock and ones in Amarillo, that do, law firms that do a lot of abatements. I'm trying to, I have not yet been able to figure out exactly who the lawyer is and which firms they are. But I'm trying to find those to see what they can offer to us. The question is, I guess I'm looking for guidance from you guys as to what, what needs to be done.
If we can hear from the others that you're exploring in a timely manner, I think we should do that. But I do feel like time is a business.
I think it is too. We got, we got to.
I think, I think.
So there's a lot of negotiation here just in the value of it. I feel like, I mean, when they're coming in at two sixty-four point six versus five hundred and ten million, that's a big number, Jeff.
It's a big, it's a big time.
That's huge, Jeff. Over the years, I was in the war doing this negotiation. I remember anybody saying what he said about that.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's the one thing you're, you're not going to get probably from law.
You're not going to get that.
Not going to get that from law.
So I'm wondering if we don't need both. We need someone like him running the numbers, but at the end we run it by legal counsel.
So I just, that just, that just takes, that just takes, takes time and it takes money, takes our money away too, that, that we would receive. So one thing, so Jack County is using them on the, there's that solar farm. They're building one on Hostel Range Road right now. And then there's another one that's about to go in right next to it. And Jack County used someone else for the first abatement, that the one that they're building right now. And they're using Snowden for this abatement. And I, I'm for sending, sending the, the agreement and I, I marked it up. I went ahead and went through the whole thing and kind of gave them the, the talking points or that I, what I would think or what would be my talking points of what, what you try to get negotiated into deal. So we might get an, an opportunity to kind of see what it would look like. Because I've given a lot of comments that you guys have given me over the, you know, that you wanted to see out of something like this. I could put it out on a list, sir, and see if I can find out who the other two places are. I haven't put it publicly out there because I know the Allison Bass guys wanted to list firm services. I didn't want to put it out there. But I'll, I'll put it out there and see if I can get them to.
Remain in every week now, so.
We can move quick.
We can move quicker than normal.
Yeah.
Or if we had to, we'd all do the same.
Yeah, sure. Well, we're going to be needing everybody. All right, anything else on this topic?
Keep, keep problems if you do a little bit of that. We'll, we'll give us a separate time limit though. We don't hear anything from you guys.
Yeah.
Have you heard anything back or anything that we've asked for?
I haven't heard. We haven't gotten, they haven't done the environmental study.
Well, I know, but then by no study takes.
And they said that Mary Ann gave us another list of questions two months ago. It's been a while. Uh, he said he would get those answers. So that will, he says he's going to, I went six weeks. I didn't talk to him.
The main thing we're watching, nobody's just watching the queue. And then the queue will tell the story on the whole situation. Without the queues, not happening.
And they're on it.
Yes.
They're, they're starting to, yeah, they're starting to work up the queues, so.
Explain the queue, huh?
That's the encore to get, to get access to the power lines. So they have, the queue is the waiting list and they.
They have the capacity to take you up there.
Huh?
Don't they have to have the capacity to take you?
Right, right, yeah, yeah. And so it's where they are in the process of figuring that out. So there's, they've got everybody who's trying to get on their lines, want to kind of see where they are in the line. And they're, they're kind of a new entry on the line. So they're at your bottom of the line.
What was their statement about the, the environmental impact study? They haven't even started?
I don't know if they, I don't know if they've started or not. They don't, they don't have it yet. So.
I hope they move back to the new, that they did that, that big bridge out there in Laszlo in nineteen seventy-four. It's just getting there in a year and a half. Do the archaeology study after that.
Really?
Yep.
Um, one thing I've learned about everything, we've got a, it's.
Very frustrating. Probably need to do a flow.
Huh?
Probably need to do a flow too.
All right. Shall we move on?
Yes.
All right, let's move to item number four. Consider the county clerk meetings from the previous meeting, which was May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. That is in your packets. There were motion, Commissioner Wiley, second from Commissioner Shook. All in favor? Give me opposed?
Trump, yeah.
Motion passes five zero.
Why the second ever?
I, but seeing the clothes you can hear.
It was a Bible we're putting on here.
Yeah. Item number five, Treasury Director's financial report, updates on security pledge. We got Treasury model, the report. Item six, consider the auditor's budget amendments and vouchers table.
Well, we wasn't going to have any vouchers table. Well, we had a few that we thought we'd get in. We couldn't put them into this morning since it's the first of the month. Uh, just a few small ones. One big one, we got our property renewal, our property insurance compact. And it went a ten percent of last year. It's a hundred and thirty-two thousand, three thirty-seven. Makes our total today a hundred and forty-one thousand, three point seven twenty-five, all of the changes.
Okay, no conflicts? We're moving, we're pushing, Commissioner Wiley, second from Commissioner Gray. All in favor?
Nine.
Give me opposed? Motion passes five zero. We're being loud there, guys. All right, so item number nine is a executive session to discuss with our attorneys the responses to the, to a potential litigation issue. I suggest we go to the jury room for that. Get everything conference in.
We're going to head in and talk to.
Head in.
Well, then, eighteen?
Eighteen.
You won't be in or out?
Um. I'll be in.
Does that mean there's no return?
Oh, I had this. Where are the, is it there?
Yes.
Sign?
Second.
Thank you. All right, so we go to jury room?
Yes.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Guys, in case you have any. Question? Uh, where you, and I've got. One out.
When? Y'all have any other?
This thing will be partially.
I can cut it.
Partially, what is, is a member of this court. You're pushing to grab on, guys. Quickly, conserve, bottom line, eventually. There's a lot of evidence, there's a lot of evidence, ladies and gentlemen, by my time around here. Over to the county, to your grand living. You see how they're living, they're shining earth. Be sure that you have been there with them and the state is sustainable. And track every other thing you saw, guys, kind of. Always. We're not here for your reasons. Real, complete, delicate, not about, they got away and that's, that's about. Be, be, like today. I'll give them, I'll give them, I think this. They come here, they're visiting, that, that, I'm sorry, pardon. Like, there's no way that you could, have the money to talk. And, and say this, don't make, don't make it, all of it. You're saving all the other nights that they, I don't like, but, but those nights could be there anyway. It could be there anyway. Standard for ministry. Kind of like the real hospital would take, do a critical period. The designation, twenty-three years ago, it's always been so. But they got the emergency, that's all right. Many, many years, not killed, I think, and they had to cover up this year. Whatever. Broke the hospital. That's for a felony, not a, you can't say this, you made a horrible decision. Don't get us involved. All right, um, do we just come and get you when we're finishing there?
Yeah.
I don't think we can carry long.
I don't know.
Three thirty-seven.
What time is it?
Ten thirty-seven.
Ten thirty-seven, and we have returned from executive session.
Okay.
Um.
Good, so we're back in session now?
We're back in session, is there any, any motions?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, due to the advice of our attorney through email, that we make an amendment to rule five of the W P C Cemetery Rules and Regulations to be, uh, five, just respect in the way with the rest of it, uh, with the W P Johnson Cemetery shall be, uh,
Treated.
Treated with the utmost respect. And then due to what our, our attorney advised us on, rule three, the, not to make any changes to rule three in this time.
So the motion by Commissioner Cresswell is to amend rule number five, not rule three, and to basically take out, basically to make the heading just respect, and then keep the first sentence, and then eliminate the rest of that. Do we have a second to that motion?
Sure.
We have a second from Commissioner Wiley, is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Can I get everyone to sign the first amendment, first amended William P. Johnson Cemetery Rules and Regulations? Sign it, pass it. Stacy, would you like to work through, we just got a couple of agenda items before the, and then take a break before we go into? Wait, did I, I think we can get through this pretty quick. Look at it. Item number eleven, discuss, consider reservation number one twenty-four, supporting.